Please stand.
Listen, if we didn't award ourselves...
Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we're gonna have the Boy Scout Troop 66 lead the pledge of allegiance.
Where's the flag?
Oh, there it is. Oh, whoops. I gotta get with the program here.
Caller guard, forward march. Caller guard, halt. Caller guard, post your colors. Audience, please rise. Please face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. Scout salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Audience, please remain seated. Caller guard dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
What is the name?
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Ms. Eriko.
Here.
Mrs. Ward.
Here.
Ms. Maroni.
Here.
Mr. Brescher.
Here.
Mrs. Patel.
Here.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen. All present, Mrs. Peng.
Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public parties at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison's Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 11th, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So, on the first agenda item, we're gonna have a closed session to have some discussions. Then.
Whereas Section 8 of the Oakland Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding health insurance issues. Three, is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters should be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. And four, this resolution should take effect immediately.
Okay, can I have a motion? Ms. Eriko?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Patel?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
So, we're gonna take about an hour. We'll try to be back at seven o'clock. Thank you.
One at a time. Shoot up, Montez. I hate to see there are nobody who get their pictures.
All right. So, let's reconvene. I'm sorry for the delay, because we had a very important issue we needed to discuss. I'm sorry for the delay. So, all right, so let's reconvene to the open session. Can I have a motion for that? Okay. Mrs. Maroni and Mr. Eriko.
Okay, roll call. Dr. Chen? Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Yeah.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yeah.
All present.
All right, so let's go to the regular program. The student recognition, that's the, you know, the exciting part every, twice a year, twice a semester. So, without any further ado, and we got Mr. Persbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Welcome, everybody, to student recognition program. Always fun to stand up here and honor y'all. Just a couple of rules real quick. I'm gonna be calling up principals up here. When you hear your name announced, please just stand up right where you are, and you could be recognized. And at the end of the student recognition, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Shi. He's gonna say some words of closure, and then we'll all be dismissed at the same time. We good with that? Okay. Mr. Ross is good. That means we can start. So, without further ado, I will call to the podium the principal of Herbert Hoover Middle School, Mr. Brian McGrath.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank the Board of Education, our superintendent, Mr. Saxton, Mr. Persbecky, and all those who worked to ensure that our students and their advisors receive the recognition that they deserve. On December 23rd, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Club, representing Herbert Hoover Middle School, participated in the Fall Leadership Conference at the Pines Manor. Our students competed against clubs from across the state, having their skills, knowledge, and leadership tested and judged. Under the direction of the advisors, Mrs. Hillary Marks and Mrs. Mary Capitan, the following students earned first-place gold in the banner event. Adedoyan Ayani, Emily De Prida, Riva Golap, Valerie Kersting, Neela, and Bumani, and Sharvi Shagam. Please stand and be recognized. The following students earned first-place gold in the Go Green competition. Shuhani Chaski, Reina Patel, Tanvi Ravila, and Puju Katara. Let's give them a round of applause. And finally, I would like to recognize those students who earned first-place silver in the Caregiver Carryall Competition. Isha Manjikar and Sanika Manjikar. Again, thank you, Mrs. Marks and Mrs. Capitan for providing our students with such distinguished leadership and support throughout the year. I will now turn the microphone over to Mr. Ross.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Saxton, our gracious hosts from J.P. Stevens, and most of all, the parents and the children who came out tonight in recognition. A lot of our students have multiple activities and aren't able to be here tonight, but those of you who are, as Mr. Persbecky said, when your name is called, please stand. From Christopher McKnight and the girls soccer team, we have GMC All-White Division Grace Diarrugio, Jess Hoover, Haley Verdicchio, and Samantha Moskci, with Samantha Moskci also being GMC First Team All-County. For Patrick McCaffrey with the cross-country team, we have GMC All-Conference Cynthia Berezny, and GMC All-Red Division Edison's own Casey Colletto. Football team had a banner year, winning a playoff game, getting to the state semifinals, and only lost to two teams this year, both of whom played in the state finals. So, from Andrew Fulham, the head coach, First Team GMC All-Area Offensive Line, First GMC White Division Anthony Burke, First Team White Division Second Team GMC All-Area Camille Pryor, First Team All-White Division Third Team GMC Linebacker Frankie Vega, First Team All-White Division First Team All-Area Defensive Line Keegan Keegs McGuire, First Team All-White Division All-Defensive Line All-Greater Middlesex Conference Xavier Long, Mr. Largo, First Team All-State Group Five Defensive Back First Team All-White Division First Team All-Area Defensive Back First Team All-Greater Middlesex Conference, and D1 going to the University of New Hampshire on full ride, Mr. Noah Stansbury for the football team. As always, under the direction of the renowned Mr. Kenneth Brown, for the CJMEA Region Two Chorus, Christopher Adams, Stephanie Belizario, Louis Forgione, Danielle Dick, Lauren Karvaski, Lucy Knox, and Hannah Martin. And for the ACDA Honors Choir, under Mr. Brown, we have Hannah Martin also. Under Mr. Dina Kula and Mr. Koontz from the band, the CJMEA Region Two Sri Harsha Tangelia Amudini and Omkar Sannavane for Region Two Band. And our marching band had a fantastic season. For years, they've been working to get over this hump, but they were U.S. Band's Group Four, Open State Champions, New Jersey Regional Champions, and they went to MetLife Stadium, probably the best victory there all season by anyone from New Jersey, the U.S. Band Group Four National Champions. I'm gonna read their names. It's a long list, because we've been successful in growing our arts program here, so please hold your applause to the last name. Fiza Abid, Christopher Ademes, Elijah Agabau, Srika Agarwal, Elias Enenitis, Sohan Apalabukultala, Clinton Asanteado, Alondes Ayupov, Kristas Ayappin, Anahi Balbuena, Karat Banger, Faith Benko, Ray Betances, Juan Betances, Arian Bat, David Bishop, Samaya Bonds, Elton Byrd, Aaron Sender, Anthony Chen, Elena Cherian, Emily Chung, Amy Cortez, Nerali Dwaldi, Sonali Dwaldi, Trinity Daniels, Jose De La Barera, Anthony De Santo, Elizabeth Des Renlou, Christopher Dimari, Prakat Eymay, Esmeralda Eraso, Praise Esachubueze, Gina Fitz, Sidhant Gandhi, Karthik Gangjit Gredi, Mathias Garb, Sam Go, Erica Gonzalez, Ish Gupta, Ashley Haynes, Emily Heller, Gabriel Hernandez, Zania Herrera, Justin Huang, Jalen Jones, Alexis Kirkia, Kavya Manduva, David Marcello, Hannah Martin, Geraldine Mendoza, Rashree Mishra, Gina Modaisia, Olivia Morales, Quali Nakissisa Jones, Isabel Nalepa, Nicholas Nahila, Aurora O'Connor, Jennifer Palladino, Neil Patel, Maya Pennix, Alanki Pereira, Sergio Ramirez, Kaia Ryle, Sonia Raymond, Alexis Reyes, Nicole Reyes, Caitlin Robinson, Nikia Rogers, Francesca Romius, Himansh Sahitha, Jesse Santoni, Catherine Sargent, Herakresh Sethiyanirayan, Yusuf Sheikh, Omkar Sannavane, Simone Stephen, Michael Stukis, Shane Striker, Sri Harsha Tangila Mundi, Mike Thicar, Sean Tanra, Ross Turla, Akil Vargis, Francisco Velasquez, Aman Verma, Travis Villafranca, Kayla Watson, Julia Webb, Kyle Werther, Austin Williams, Stacy Zhang, and your two, let's see, we have ... well, that's good. That'll be it. So, round of applause for the band, everybody. Thank you, guys, in the back. And just to further see that the best public education in Middlesex County comes from the Edison Public Schools. Only 15 schools ended up having more than Edison High School in terms of national merit semifinalists, one of them our sister school, J.P. Stevens, but we're very proud of Geneshwar Chandi, Shanji Prasad, Sandeep Ramesh, and Jeffrey Zhao for national merit semifinalists. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. And I'll call up Ms. Gail Polikowski.
Good evening, and congratulations to the Herbert Hoover and Edison High students receiving recognition this evening. It is my privilege to introduce the J.P. Stevens students. And we'll start with our 2018 GMC Girls Volleyball Champions. Congratulations to Coach White and Simran Carlson, Irene Kwan, Isabel Swetowsky, Victoria He, Laurel Sakaria, Holly Leary, Lauren Hune, Myanda Ruiz, Diana Chen, Annika Lu, Samar Aranita, sorry, Riley Alensiks, Emily Tavoris, Olympia Georgie, Morgan Schluess, Elizabeth Kaush, Shannon Lazarowitz, and Jessica Jacoby. And receiving special honors, Irene Kwan, GMC First Team All-Red Division, GMC First Team All-Conference, and receiving GMC First Team All-Red Division, First Team All-Conference, NJ SIAA Second Team All-State Group Four Fall Athlete of the Year, Simran Carlson. Congratulations to the volleyball team. Congratulations to Coach Dotto and Mia Chesere for GMC All-Red Division. And earning honors, GMC All-Red Division, GMC First Team All-Conference, Ava Dool. And our second group champions, all right, congratulations to Coach Pizzano and the GMC Conference Champion Girls Varsity Tennis Team. Trinity Connon, Siddhika Deshmukh, sorry, Anushkar Vishanan, Lauren Sen, Shriya Upadhyay, Shubi Upadhyay, Vatsal Abahal, Sanjana Chitnis. Congratulations. And receiving, say standing, receiving special honors, Trinity Connon, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, Sanjana Chitnis and Siddhika Deshmukh, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, GMC Champion at Second Doubles. Lauren Sun, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, GMC Champion at Second Singles. Vitthal Abahal, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, GMC Champion at Third Singles. And Shubi Upadhyay and Shriya Upadhyay, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, Champions at First Doubles and Second Team All-State Group Four. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to Coach McMullen and Austin John, received GMC All-Red Division honors. Coach Riggi and Football, receiving GMC All-Red Division honors, Kamir Brown, Devin Folks, Keyshawn Taylor, Casey Hazard, and also GMC honors, Casey Hazard. And congratulations to Mr. Joy Laird, Ms. Dematia, Ms. Shopka, and the FCC LA students earning first place at the Fall Leadership Connection. Katie Fallon-Roche, Drishi Kanakia, Jaclyn Trotman, Aditya Shrikant, Arya Agarwal, Amag Kudva, Neil Prabhu, Ramitha Ravashankar, Navleen Cowher, Aditi Mani, Shuraram Getasetti, Ani Aravindan, Hardik Viguru, Melanie Mendonka, Kyle Aravindan, Neil Patel. Receiving first place at the National Cluster Meeting, Surab Toddkar, Andrea Maris, Srinivasan Ramakrishnan. Receiving a golden medal at the National Leadership Conference, Keith Furtado, Kishav Kateri, Yashika Chowda, Amrutha Bondi, Nikita Kopre, Samantha Muparapu, Annika Ravi, Annika Dongi, Ridi Srinivasan, Navleen Cowher, Aditi Mani, Akshara Thadamala, Amag Kudva, Srinivasan Ramakrishnan, Aditya Venkataswaran, Isabel Swetowsky, Gabriella Cruz, Rockon Kasim, Sunam Salvi, Ashita Patel, Kirishma Shinoy, Ramitha Ravashankar, and Andrea Maris. Congratulations. Congratulations to Mr. Dina Kula and Mr. John Zazali and the band, the most from any one school in the region. These are the students selected to CJMEA Region Two Band. Nitya Nangir, Netja Chowdhury, Steven Juan, Sean Zhang, Ashley Chow, Nathan Song, Arthur Eng, Derek Yu, Sinna Sai, Ruben Chang, Shivam Kamat, Hannah Zhang, Christopher Seao, Randee Chahal, Abhinav Vaiedi, Himanshu Pontikar, Jada Kang, Aditya Arun, Suvan Sundaresh, Abhishek Tarve, Ryan Ha, Zoe Wang, Srikar Rishwanathan, Shuryus Lingam, Matthew Lu, Samar Sitwala, Brian Jiang, Sean Yu, Timothy Chen, Aditya Chakrabarti, Joshua Park, Pranav Krishna, Timothy Hu, Shinbe Vrahandran, Mayank Palawal, Christopher Shen, Ayush Gupta, Rishi Shaw, Shruti Tandon, Shreyas Vardy. Congratulations. And congratulations to Mr. Lee and the chorus, again, the most from any one school. CJMEA Region Two Treble Chorus, Aditya Badacharya, Sneha Badacharya, Megna Das, Nihya Adala, Shrada Haraharan, Ashna Janalagada, Varsha Kartik, Gabrielle Lee, Namrata Naresh Kumar, Vedanchi Sharma, Drithi Valori. CJMEA Region Two Mixed Chorus, Janhavi Ahira, Vinaya Akavor, Rhythm Chowdhury, Sunjay Dut Dubey, Kevin Gee, Sakthi Gundi, Meda Garadhikan, Suved Joshi, Jyoti Kabra, Harah Raj Krishnan, Varaj Kumar, Sharvil Lomaiye, Samir Mudikar, Arya Massan, Serena Ng, Ayush Patel, Om Patel, Jana Kiram Rajaraman, Atharva Ranadive, Hersh Ranthura, Rea Shaw, Solani Shaw, Sahil Sharma, Anika Sud, Rea Teladivara, Harry Thomas, Jason John Thomas, Mishdi Tomar, Elton Vaz, Shresh Valori, Vasanava Winakavanna, Sidney Wu. Congratulations. Congratulations to Mr. Verdi and CJMEA Region Two Orchestra Students, Kelsey Cow, Andrew Chong, Adam D'Souza, Phoebe Ma, Rachel Tam. Congratulations. Receiving All-National Junior High Honor Choir, Varun Kari and Ayush Patel. All-National High School Honor Choir, Elton Vaz. All-National High School Honor Choir, Vidhika Dial and Megna Das. And NAFMEA All Eastern Honor Mixed Chorus, Kevin Gee, Samir Mudikar, Mukhan Ramakrishnan. Congratulations. All Eastern, excuse me, All Eastern Honor Treble Chorus, Shruti Venkatesh, Nithra Jayaprakesh. All-National Honor Chorus, Samir Mudikar. All Eastern Band, Nitya Nagir, Sinna Sai, Abhishek Tarve, Zoe Wang, Shinam Yadav, Matthew Lu, Brian Jiang, Pranav Krishna, and Christopher Shen. Congratulations. And our national merit semifinalists, Kylan Bao, Stephanie Bahan, Sanjana Banushali, Aditya Badacharya, Dylan Chang, Samuel Chen, Nika Dublish, Emil Johnny, Nithra Jayaprakesh, Anna Jiang, Brian Jiang, Lakaya Kalu, Calvin Lee, Matthew Lu, Karan Menon, Arush Nagri, Sravana Pamareddy, Kanise Pan, Allison Park, Arnav Patel, Priya Seldakumar, Adrian Wang, Joshua Wang, and Alex Shi. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, and maybe one big round of applause for all of you out there. At this time, I turn the program over to Mr. Shi for a resolution.
Thank you. So, can I have a motion for the student recognition resolution? Mrs. Maroni, Mrs. Conway?
Dr. Chen? Mrs. Conway?
Yes. I love raising my hand. They never call.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
All right, congratulations to all the students who were recognized tonight. And when you go back tonight, can you please thank your parents for driving around, putting all the extra efforts to get you here? And tomorrow morning, go to your classroom, thank the, you know, your director, thank all the coaches for all these extra effort to get you in here. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna take a five-minute break, then we'll get to our regular program. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to our regular meeting agenda. Hello? We're going back. All right, first up, we're gonna approval, the approval of the minutes of December 1st, 12th, and the December 7th, and then the approval of the Board Secretary's report. Can I have a motion for that? Mrs. Maroni, Mr. Eriko. Minutes and the Board Secretary Report.
Dr. Chen?
I abstain.
Abstaining both?
Just a minute.
Okay. Mrs. Conway?
I have to abstain, because I wasn't on the board.
Okay. Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
All right, next up, public comments, resolutions only. But before we get into the details on the resolution on the personnel report, there are two items we'd like to table. That is Item 15 and Item 16. Item 15 and 16, the two last items on the personnel report, we're gonna table that. And do we have any other topics we wanna table? Yes?
Any of the resolutions you asked?
Yeah, any of the resolutions, yeah. Now, the public is gonna, public is gonna comment on the resolutions. If we're not gonna go through those resolutions, we, you know, they don't need a comment on it.
I would like to table the curriculum instruction, the item number C.
The entire thing or certain items?
I think I want to table the number C only.
The entire thing?
That is C.
Oh, just C, okay. The grouping procedures?
Yeah, we still have some questions on that.
Okay. Wofel, what would you want to table?
C also.
C only?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table the curriculum instruction, item number C, from today's agenda? Okay? The other items are fine. They're not tabled. So, just item C, it's getting tabled, okay? So, Mrs. Peng, second? Do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. Patel?
Case the vote to table item C, which is the approval of grouping procedures. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes.
All right. So, now we are open for public comments on resolutions, except C and the two items from the personnel report. Yes, go ahead.
Carol Podowski, 39, Jonathan Drive. Mr. Shi, Mr. Eriko, Mrs. Ward, Ms. Maroni, Mrs. Peng, Mr. Brescher, Mrs. Patel, Dr. Chen, and Mrs. Conway. On the occasion of New Jersey School Board Recognition Month 2019, I would like to once again congratulate our two newly-elected Board of Education members, and to thank them both for stepping up to take on this important responsibility. I would also like to thank each of our veteran members of the board for their dedication to our students, our schools, and our community. You have each made a positive difference in our schools. One of the key foundations of our democracy is public education, preparing future leaders and citizens for the important task of keeping our great country on track. Our schools and the students who attend our schools have many highly-trained and skilled professional educators, working hard to prepare and empower them for this daunting task. But that alone is not enough. They say it takes an entire village to raise a child, and the school board is a perfect
From their cultural and professional diversity comes our strength, which, when directed toward a common goal, our schools just can't miss. So thank you all, and let's make it a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Bill Brunner, 215 Lowering Avenue. Under Finance, Transfer of Funds, the second-to-last item on the bottom, the health benefits, we're taking $485,000 out of the health benefits. Over the years, I have questioned this particular account, which seems to have money drawn out of it on a periodic basis, and sometimes, as is the case now, a large sum of money. People occasionally say, oh, there must be money hidden someplace, and the answer from Dan and the rest of the board is, no, there's no hidden money, there's no slush fund. But the monies that come out of the health benefits, I've never seen them go back in. They've always come out. So it leads me to think that possibly, we're over-budgeting the health benefits a little, more than a little bit.
Dan, you wanna respond? There's no slush fund, I can tell you that.
Well, when I put this budget together, if you remember, we were still with Horizon Blue Cross. We went to Cigna with a proposed savings of about over $3 million. So obviously, there is money available in that net fund, which I budgeted for the original amount, which was 7% higher than the original, the amount from last year. So we will be rebudgeting for next year's, based on what we anticipate our proposed increase will be for next year, and it'll probably be less than it is currently, on this current year's budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay? See none? Oh. Raise your hand. Okay.
Andrew Hyville, Harvard Avenue, Edison. I wasn't gonna speak, but since Mr. Brecher brought it up, I did do my research in checking the back history of monies being taken out of the health benefits line. From July of 2012 until tonight, the board has transferred $10.1 million out of health benefits, and not one dime has ever went back into that fund. In 2012 to 2013, you transferred 2.4 million. In 1314, you transferred a million. In 1415, you transferred 1.5 million. In 1516, you transferred 1.5 million. In 1617, you transferred a million. In 1718, you transferred 1.2 million. And from July of 2018 till tonight, you've transferred 1.5 million, for a total of over $10 million added to the health benefits line. So if it's not a slush fund, it's some kind of fund.
Thank you.
Can I?
You wanna respond?
Yeah, 'cause I'd just like Dan to, 'cause I'm wondering, but I believe that when Dan puts together his budget, his budget is based upon our full enrollment. So you would have our teachers at whatever salary they are, plus all what their benefits are. And then if we have a teacher that goes out for maternity, or if they leave, and we get a substitute, the district does save money, but budgeting-wise, you need to account for that original number.
Correct.
At the beginning, right?
And of course, then we have Chapter 78, where we had contributions by our staff. And then I also have people waive their benefits, and we give them 2,500, and I save about $30,000 when we do that. But I have to budget for it, 'cause if they do take the benefits, I have to have the money in the budget.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to say, is that you have to put it into your budget initially, and then over the course of the year, with people that retire or are out. I think you refer to it as breakage?
Well, that's for salaries, for more.
Yeah.
More than anything, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Toujag. I'm not a resident of Edison, but I teach at JP Stevens High School. I would like to refer to the Program of Studies section of the minutes, most notably the changes to the science curriculum going forward for next year. I believe that we all have so much to be proud of in Edison Township, and I stand here before you, representing the Science Department of JP Stevens. We have always been committed to a very strong, strong work ethic with our students, and we are on board with all the initiatives that come from the state, federal, our district. We are very much of very hard-working people, let's put it that way. And we are very distraught over the idea that we are potentially moving towards reducing the contact time with us and our students in our classrooms. The buzz is that because of the science exam, that's new with the, with the state, that we are realigning our curriculum to switch from environmental for freshmen to biology. And being that it's a six-credit course, well, previously and presently is a six-credit course, that it puts a real big burden on us, especially at JP Stevens, with the numbers and just the physical room for us to hold our classes. So it's being proposed that courses for freshmen be reduced from six credits to five credits, which would eliminate the lab period every week. That is eliminating 40 periods per year where we would have contact with our students. And with the initiatives of the federal government, and the state, and the next-generation science standards, and everything that is being pushed for, for our students to become better thinkers and have the time to develop their reasoning skills, this is moving in exactly the opposite direction of where we would like to see things going. And the end result of this, unfortunately, will come to removing things from the curriculum that just can't be covered when you're taking away a significant percentage of time with the students. Will end up falling down on the students, who are so pushed to their own limits already, wanting to go to the best colleges, to achieve all the things that they've always been achieving. We teach our courses to push our students for reaching the stars, and removing, taking such a significant amount of time away from us with our students, will do a great disservice to them. There has to be some other way to make up, to make up the time, to make up the space, but not at the expense of the academic contact that we have with our students. So I don't, this is new to us, that this was even coming to the board minutes. It's not something that is, a science teacher would be in favor of. It's not something that we would move towards for anyone to excel, as to what we want our students to become. And we really, really implore you to consider other alternatives than moving in this direction, because this is a direction that we'll not come back from. You know, if this, we don't even know what the plan is. Is this just for biology? Or is this for biology one year, and then it's gonna, if it worked for bi, if it worked for biology, will it work for chemistry? Will it work for physics? And we really, before we give this in, please reconsider. Don't take our kids away from us, don't take them away from us for this contact time, because they need us, and this can't fall on them solely. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask a question before you go.
Oh, sure.
I wasn't quite sure. So you're talking about biology?
Yes.
That's offered for freshmen?
It will be offered for freshmen, yes.
Which doesn't exist before, right? Does it? This class, 'cause I was on the curriculum committee, and we were talking about these classes, my impression was it was not offered before.
Biology is offered, but usually sophomores take it.
Okay, so we're adding this to freshmen, but as a five-credit course?
Right.
Okay, why is that reducing the?
Because in the course, because this is their only exposure that they will have for biology. So rather than them having six periods, which they would have now, they're going to only have five periods per week.
Oh, so, so if they are offered as, okay, so they're no longer offered for?
So they're taking away the lab period. So we would normally have a double period where we could do extensive activities during that double-period session, which they are taking away and making it only 40 minutes per day for five days a week.
Okay, okay. I don't think we're aware of that, okay? So that's not, yeah.
No, that's not favorable at all, not at all, because there's so much stuff that needs to unfold, and you need the time to do that. So we would be meeting with the students for 40 periods less per year.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, my understanding is, the reasoning is because the, in freshman class is so large, that to physically have the rooms in the building to have a six periods, 'cause it's very tricky to schedule six periods.
Right.
But I don't know that that's a good reason to sacrifice the academic prowess of a program that's working very well.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
Okay.
Which is, but thank you for expressing your.
Yes, absolutely.
I really appreciate it.
Yes, my pleasure.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
With Mrs. Peng's okay, I would like to table it, to take a little bit of a look into it.
Right, I think, yeah, we were, since we weren't aware of that before, and we already approved it, I think, yeah.
Okay, I would make a motion to table that.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Dr. Chen? So we're tabling curriculum instruction item B, the high school program of studies, the entire thing, or we just talk, tabling the, the subject? Yes.
I do have a question. I'm in favor of tabling, but doesn't the, the curriculum guide go out to the students very soon?
We can do it next month. Is there gonna be an issue?
Is that a problem, Deborah?
Yeah. Is there? What's the answer? No?
There would be a policy.
Yes?
If we table.
Okay. Yeah, can we get an explanation on this?
Can we get an explanation about, you know, why the program already been sent out without the board approval?
So there's a question pending before the board about the impact of tabling this agenda item, and I think the appropriate response is for the administration to be able to articulate what the impact might be, if any, to tabling it at this point, and if, if Mr. Saxton's okay with it, maybe you wanna ask one of your administrators to respond on that issue.
So the high schools begin scheduling, as you know, we have over 4,500 high school students, and so that scheduling process begins with approval of the program of studies, which it does, if that happens tonight, the second quarter begins on February 5th, the third quarter begins on February 5th, and we would start scheduling at that time. I would recommend holding the biology decision from the program of studies and approving the rest of the program of studies. We can run that as a five or six-credit class, depending on space. The recommendation at the Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting was to offer it in five credits at every single level. It has been done successfully in many schools. We did our research, and we are out of space, and that was the recommendation. But we can go back and look at that, and make a decision about biology being five or six credits a month from now. The children would still take it either way, and it wouldn't impact their schedule.
Okay, so the suggestion is just to take the biology item, right? So we, are we okay with that? We, instead of the whole program, just biology?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so can I have a formal, formal motion on that, Dan?
Yeah, I just need a, Mr. Erica and Dr. Chen made the motion, they have to amend their motions.
So you gotta amend your motion to just biology?
Just biology.
Okay.
I would amend it to just biology.
Same with Dr. Chen? Okay, so we just amend the motion, just to table the biology of the program of studies, everything else move forward? Okay?
Okay, so this is a vote to table biology only on the program of studies booklet?
Correct.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Okay, so carried.
All right, any other public comments? Other resolutions? See none? Let's move on. Can we, can I have a resolution for personnel only? You know, just the personnel item? Yes, Mrs. Patel, second? Mrs. Maroney?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erica?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Okay, so carried.
All right, any other public comments? If you have any more, you know, comments, please sit in the front, so we can save a little bit of time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mukhan Ramakrishnan. I'm a junior at JP Stevens. So first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for, like, putting together all these new high school courses. I know it takes a lot of work, but once again, I wanted to echo the concerns of Ms. Toujagu and some of the other teachers in the Science Department. And we're just concerned about, like, the effect that, let's say, making biology a five-credit course may have on future science classes. I understand all of this is with the intent of, like, getting the biology, chemistry, and physics in, like, by 11th grade, and that lets students have the choice of science class in senior year, and that's a very good thing. But like, let's say we make biology a five-credit course, then most likely, we'll have so many freshmen exiting biology from 9th grade next year. We'll have to make chemistry a five-credit course too, and then we'll have to make, I don't know, honors physics a five-credit course too. And like, all of that's gonna really cut down on the amount of science that we actually learn. 'Cause like, I know that personally, my experiences in biology and chemistry have largely been shaped by those extra periods that I've had, and it's a lot more important than what somebody who's not in the classroom may believe it is. So I'm so glad that all of you came together and tabled this. But yeah, just think about this, please do consider that, even though we might not have space, this might not be like the best possible solution to the situation. But yeah, thank you so much for, once again, keeping us, the students, your first priority. We really, really appreciate it, even if we don't come out and like, tell you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming on and saying it. We really appreciate it. It's, sometimes it's just best to hear from the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the resolutions? See none? Let's move on. Can we, can I have a resolution for personnel only? You know, just the personnel item? Yes, Mrs. Patel, second? Mrs. Maroney?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erica?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes.
All right, now, let's move on for the remaining of the items. Administration, Curriculum Instruction, with approval of the high school program studies, with the biology tabled, Theotrips, PD, People Services, and Finance, everything together. Okay? Can I have a motion on that? Okay, Mr. Erica, second? Okay, Mr. Brecher?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Under Finance, what is that, what does that include?
That includes the bill list.
The bill list?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself from check number 147497. Is that the right time?
Yes. Yes, and everything else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
We have two committee reports. First up, Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mrs. Peng?
Yeah, Curriculum and Technology Committee had a meeting on January 15th, 2019, at Ed Center, from 12 to 3:00. Present at the meeting are Shannon Peng, Elizabeth Conway, Dr. Yuna Chen, Beth Maroney, Deborah Gulick, Berninda Mahib, Mahibia, Laurie Mayer, Martin Malake, and Harriet Sedaris. At the beginning of the meeting, we discussed the high school program studies with the subject supervisors, and we are excited that we are going to offer more high school-level courses to our new, to our students next year. Ms. Gulick already did a presentation on this last week, so I'm just gonna go highlight the courses here. It's AP Computer Science Principles, Introduction to American Studies, Biology, we're gonna table that, so that's not included here. Physics Honors and AP Physics C, AP Environmental. Deborah Gulick, Berninda Mahib, Mahibia, Laurie Mayer, Martin Malak, and Harriet Sedaris. At the beginning of the meeting, we discussed the high school program studies with the subject supervisors, and we are excited that we are going to offer more high school-level courses to our new, to our students next year. Ms. Gulick already did a presentation on this last week, so I'm just gonna go highlight the courses here. It's AP Computer Science Principles, Introduction to American Studies, Biology, we're gonna table that, so that's not included here. Physics Honors and AP Physics C, AP Environmental, and additional levels of some elective courses such as Dance Three, Creative Writing Two. Most of these courses are either requested by our students or added to better fit the graduation requirement. So I do want to thank our administration, especially the subject supervisors, for their dedicated work on this, finding what, and finding and providing what our students really need. Additionally, Ms. Gulick explained that all supervisors are reviewing which courses are eligible to be approved for dual enrollment with Middlesex County College. We expect to expand our offerings for the nineteen-twenty school year. This is a great opportunity to get course credit in high school, you know, without paying the expensive tuition later in college. So we will communicate information about the program with all the families in the district as soon as we learn more about it. Following the high school programs, we talk about the middle school programs. Ms. Gulick reviewed the addition of the new elective Discovering Computer Science that will be offered to our eighth-grade students at middle school level. Ms. Gulick also already gave a public presentation at our last board meeting. I just want to add that the committee wanted to make sure that this curriculum of this course would really address the need of the students, so rather than playing with random vendor tools, we want to provide our eighth graders a realistic view on computer science so that they can decide whether to pursue more on the subject later in high school. The committee also expressed the interest in half-year electives so that the students could take more of the electives. For example, eighth grader in academic English classes can only choose one elective, but both Family Consumer Science and Discovering Computer Science are offered to eighth-grade onlys, so they would have to pick one and give up the other. The accelerated English class would have, would be able to choose both, but we want to give every student a chance to learn both subjects. So we need to gather more information on this in class offerings, class scheduling, to see if any changes are possible in the future. Besides the electives, Ms. Gulick also reviewed the grouping procedures for middle school students in language, arts, and math. The PSAT eight slash nine scores will be used as part of the criterias in grade, in for placement into grade nine for both English and math. But we, we just find out that there might be some problems and questions in the placement, the grouping procedures for science. So we wanted to have those questions answered before we can go ahead and prove those, prove the, the whole entire grouping procedures. There's also a proposal for adding a supervisor of twenty-first-century skills in order to strengthen the programs along with computer science, technology, family and consumer science, and business. The committee will consider the proposal when we finalize the two thousand nineteen and twenty budget. Instructional coaching, we talked about that. So there is, Ms. Mahibia reviewed a proposal that allows for restructuring of some of the programs to allow for the addition of five instructional coaches to work exclusively with elementary school teachers. The second pilot for the remainder of two thousand nineteen, Ms. Gulick reviewed the status of the pilot programs for a community of secondary teacher learning leaders. More than forty teachers have already applied for the position. The training will start January thirty-first. Last but not the least for parents, the district is partnering with the municipal alliance for a free substance abuse prevention awareness program called Hidden in Plain Sight. This program will be held on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, from seven to eight P.M., and all parents of middle school or high school students are invited to attend. Refreshments will be served at six-thirty. Special Agent Timothy McMahan will highlight signs and symptoms of alcohol and drug abuse and give parents tools to address the possible problems. The meetings are adjourned at about three P.M. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. So just a question on this municipal alliance parent program, do we advertise this to, you know, the district? Will be do that, right? Okay, thank you. All right, next up Township Liaison Committee. Mr. Eriko.
Yes. On January fourteenth, at seven P.M., the Township Liaison Committee met. Mr. Shi, Mrs. Ward took my place, Mr. Brescher, Mrs. Maroni, Mr. Saxon, Mr. Mashad, Mr. Pepe, and from the township side, Mr. Deal, Mr. Sandalsky, and Mr. Patel. The main topic for this particular meeting was really one topic, and that was the committee's discussion to possibly change the board of election from November back to April. And as we met, I guess, the day after this meeting, January fifteenth, the decision from both sides was to keep the election as is for now, and further discussions will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eriko. So, the upcoming meetings, we have a caucus meeting on February twentieth at seven P.M. in the Education Center, and the next public meeting will be on February twenty-fifth at seven o'clock in Edison High School. So, board member, open discussions. Any comments from board members? Yes?
I would just like to give a shout out to, oh, can't hear me? I'd like to give a shout out to the general public that the Lincoln Elementary School PTO is having a tricky tray on Friday night at TJ Middle School. It's a very active PTA, and they do wondrous things for their students, and anyone that would be interested in going, I would advise you to go because the prizes seem phenomenal, except don't take the Caribbean trip, because I'd like that one. Thank you.
Well, reserve that for you. Any other board member comments? Yes. Yes.
On Wednesday, January twenty-third, the Washington School had its twentieth annual talent show. Thirty-seven students singing, dancing, gymnastics, piano and keyboard, and trumpets, made for lively and varied entertainment. Thank you to the students, the hosts, and the advisors for their seamless program. Also on Saturday, January twenty-sixth, the Edison High School Dance Ensemble hosted a dance day open to all Edison students, grades three through twelve. The students were separated into three groups, grades three to five, six to eight in high school. Forty students participated. Grades three to eight took classes in ballet, hip-hop, contemporary, and jazz taught by Vicky Jenkins, our dance teacher, and the Senior Dance Ensemble. The high school students had three guest teachers from New York City. They took hip-hop, African, and contemporary classes. The invigorating, if not downright exhausting, activities of the day ended with all the students performing for their class, for their parents, rather, and for each other. Within the past three months, the twenty-seven Dance Ensemble students have performed at two senior citizen homes and are gearing up for the New Jersey High School Dance Festival in March. Congratulations and best wishes to all. Also, while talking to Vicky Jensen Jenkins, I found out that she will be choreographing the high school musical Curtains, which will take place March twenty-first to the twenty-third. I'm happy to hear that because Curtains is one of my all-time favorite musicals. I can't wait, and I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? All right, see none, open for public comments. Yes, Jeff, Jeff's coming. Sorry, move up if you have a public comments, thank you.
Jeff Bowden, Two Ethel Road, Edison. Tonight, a group of ETA members is out in the audience, some of our veteran staff, both on the certificated and non-certificated side. We wear these shirts as unity shirts, we make a difference. We saw that this evening by the J.P. Stevens Science Department educating the board as to why it might not be a good idea to change biology. We see that every day in our schools. And our shirts represent when we were hired, so every shirt has a year behind them. I know you've seen mine.
Yeah. A forty-eight?
That's a forty-eight? No, that's eighty, eighty-four, and I'm very proud of it. It now ranks me as the eighth-most senior educator in the town. Currently, there are six decades of shirts still in existence, starting with nineteen sixty-three and going to two thousand and eighteen. Although, only two to three percent of those shirts are of the sixties, the seventies, and the eighties. And yet fifty percent of those people that are in the top eight are sitting in this room tonight. You see, the people in the room tonight are here for the concern that you met before the meeting for and potentially after the meeting about the health benefits. Health benefits in Edison has always been the pinnacle through our community since I was hired. In fact, our first carrier that I was part of was Cigna, and in the nineteen eighties, Cigna was the best. In fact, there's only been pretty much two years in my existence in which the medical benefits have been subpar. One was a quick transition year, and I'm trying to recall when it was, but it was probably after Cigna, and then unfortunately, this year. And I want to thank the board for hearing us the other night on some of our concerns. Those concerns have continued through the weekend and frankly, today also, into some very serious concerns that a lot of our members are starting to say, well, share my name with the board. I would never do that in a public forum, but when I read these letters that are sent to us now on a daily basis where children and family members are denied their benefits or delayed their benefits, it saddens me to think that we're here at this point. I understand the economics of the equation, but in Edison, we've always done things top-rate, whether it's been giving us the best salaries to bring about the best educators, whether the best medical to keep ourselves healthy, or just the best comradeship that we have in our buildings, okay, with the professional people that we work with. As board members, your job is to be the CFO and watch the dollars, and I understand the dollars are big. But unfortunately, sometimes a savings that appears to be there over time dries up very I don't know where this is going to end in terms of the Cigna, but this week, we saw in Patterson, a very similar event took place in the media. And notably, the carrier was also Cigna. So as you again negotiate moving forward from the end of this year into next, I think you need to reach back and bring excellence back to what we know that we used to have and hopefully we will have very shortly. And I want to thank my colleagues for taking the time out tonight to come here. It's only maybe four or five percent of our staff, but it's a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Anthony DiAmmerich, fifteen, Rodax Circle, excuse me, I have a little cold today. Mr. Saxon, last week, you went over your friend's resume, Patrick Cassani, I believe he's in the audience, and it's quite an impressive resume, actually, with his new impressive salary. And we thank him for his years of service, but we're gonna put that aside for a second. We're also gonna put aside the fact that we probably should have entered into a shared service agreement with our township. And what we should have done is subsidized half of their salary, a captain, a lieutenant, a sergeant, somebody that's actually familiar with our town, our district, our children, our schools. We're gonna put that aside for a second, too, just put it aside. And then I thought to myself, when you went over the resume last week, gee whiz, how do we get so lucky here in Edison to land this gentleman into our labs? But I don't believe in coincidences, and I don't think this was a coincidence, to be quite honest with you. As a matter of fact, you received hundreds of resumes when this job posting came out, and not one of them was up to your standards, I guess. As in early fall, Mr. Cassani, just in time for his resume, I mean, for his retirement to take place, he puts his paperwork in for retirement, but there was one problem, the fact that you need a thirty-day grace period where you can't take the job. He can't take any job while his retirement goes in with the state. So what did you do? You postponed it another thirty days. See, Mr. Saxon, you should not be able to come to our district on an interim basis, with all due respect, of course, and create positions, new positions, that were unneeded on the backs of every single taxpayer in this town. It's a shame, because when you do something like this, it seems like it's not about the kids, it's not about the students, it's not about those teachers, it's about yourselves. That's the impression it is, and it's a shame. Thank you.
Just a comment, the gentleman's name is, is Mr. Cassane, okay, not Cassani?
Mr. Cassane, I'm, excuse me, my apologies.
Okay, and the position was, we even discussed it when Dr. O'Malley was here, okay, so?
Dr. O'Malley's not here anymore, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let the lawyers, let the lawyer step in, there we go.
Excuse me. No one interrupted you, and we just would ask that you let Mr. Shi make his full comment, and then you may respond, otherwise it devolves into an argument, and our board policy requires that we give each other respect when we speak.
This position has been planned for a while, okay, so that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Any other public comments? Yes.
Matt Revnack, ETA Vice President, Two Ethel Road. Two comments, first of all, I'd like to just ditto Mr. Bowden's comments. I do appreciate the ability to appear in front of the board the other night for an extended period to present our case. You know, it is very sad when you keep getting these emails from people in their circumstances. You know, these are people's lives, it's their health, and, you know, at this point, we are a contributor as well, and we have been, so we also have a vested interest financially, just like the board has. You know, when people are paying upwards of, in many cases, for family plans, ten thousand dollars, but unfortunately, they're not getting the same benefit, the same services, et cetera, that we got under the previous plan. Again, I thank the people for coming out tonight, and, you know, all the people that have shared their stories with us. The second thing I just wanted to mention, and it goes back to the science, biology, I'm not a science teacher, but I did have a number of science teachers come to me today with this after seeing it in the board agenda tonight. And, you know, when they asked me about her approach, I explained to them that you, you know, do it during the, before the resolutions come out so that possibly something can be stopped before it becomes a fact. It's amazing to me that in the current day, we're pushing the STEM areas, but yet, and we're looking to add courses in, but at the expense of other courses that are pre-existed here. I understand the concept, I've been in this school, in fact, my number's eighty-nine, so I'm still one of those eighties like Mr. Bowden. In fact, I have my thirty-year anniversary coming up in a couple of days, February first. But all the times I've been, and we've always been overcrowded, and space has been an issue, we just put on an added wing for the science department a couple of years ago in both Edison High and J.P. Stevens. And to see the kids shortened in terms of their exposure in the lab sciences, again, even though I'm not a science teacher, but I myself took six lab courses at the college level, and when these kids take sciences, we have right now a shortage of engineers and doctors, et cetera, and not exposing them to the lab situations that they need to possibly pursue these areas is a mistake. Some of you on the board are involved with pharmaceuticals and, you know, research, et cetera, you know, think about it. You want to see qualified, capable people coming out into your profession as well. I know you're saying as freshmen and et cetera, and you say, well, they have other lab courses. One of the concerns from the science department was that this, this is the first step toward eliminating it, possibly that next year in chemistry or physics, et cetera. I don't know whether that's the plan or not, but even thinking a kid going into chemistry that doesn't have that year exposure to the lab situation, and now you're handling chemicals and Bunsen burners. and now you're handling chemicals and Bunsen burners and things that can cause really some serious issues. I'm glad you tabled it for now. I hope you do check into it and think twice about it, because I think our students will be, you know, seriously negatively impacted by this. The other thing that concerned me about this, I stood here a number of times over the years, and that is the fact that our staff was never even talked to about this. This has been a constant thing over at least the last ten to fifteen years. Decisions are being made, and the people in the trenches that have a direct impact on it know nothing about it. That was one of the first questions I asked the science people that came to me today. Did you discuss this, for example, in your department meetings, et cetera? One person did tell me they brought it up last year because they heard it as a rumor, and basically, it was ignored and quote "poo-pooed." So, you know, I don't understand why you have great professionals working for you. As Mr. Bowden said, we go out there and say we have and hire the best staff we can, and you don't tap into that resource. These are the people that know what these kids need, and our students know what they need. Thank you to the young gentleman that got up and spoke before as well. Because, again, this is their future, and this is the future of our school. We always talk about ranking. I don't think you're going to see things improve when you're taking away classroom time in things like the sciences. You started a STEM academy a few years ago for that reason. And now you want to pull away from, you know, every student in biology being exposed to that lab. I think it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Bill Brunner, two fifteen Laurier Avenue. How is the search coming for the permanent superintendent?
We are going to issue a RFP very soon. I would just ask him then, just right before the meeting.
It'll be published someplace?
Absolutely.
In addition to the computer, will it be in the papers?
What's our standard procedure? I think that it will be.
The RFP you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll put that in the paper, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, before we run out of papers, the way things are going, we won't have any newspapers.
So our attorney said we are going to publish in two newspapers. Hope you can buy one of those newspapers.
All right, any other comments? Yes. Joe?
Joseph Johnson, four oh seven Durham Avenue. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mr. Saxon, Mr. She, Mrs. Gulik, Ms. Polakowski, Mr. Dr. Urbanovich, or Mr. Urbanovich, for allowing the Lena Harris Foundation mentorship program to be at J.P. Stevens and to be held at J.P. Stevens. I also would like to thank two teachers for volunteering for the program as well, Mrs. Hall as well as Mrs. Vaca. And I brought with me today a binder that every student will receive on the first day of the program. And it basically has the logo, just the name of the program, and then our three core values. And right when you open it up, it has all the contact information of all the mentors. If, you know, if they want to go, if a parent wants to call them, or if, you know, if they want to get in contact with them, like outside of the program, all their information's right here. And then this is basically the table of contents for the binder. The first section is the Lena Harris Foundation itself. The second section is the program, which basically breaks down the Excellence, Academics, and Wellness portions. And then the last section are the notes. And then in regards to the first section, we have an about page, a mission statement for the actual mentorship, I mean, the foundation, and then this is the program. We have the objective sheet, the weekly agenda, and then... Oh, that's it. And then we break down to the excellence portion. This talks about the scholarship information, and then exactly how to apply for it, and where to go, and where to contact, and who to contact. This talks about the program's survey, did the students enjoy it? What was their favorite part about the program? What aspect did they improve the most? Did the program help you in their educational journey? And then it talks about the academic portion. It talks about our trip to Mammoth on February seventeenth. And it breaks down the trip itinerary, exactly where we're going and what we're doing at what specific time. And then it breaks down the wellness portion, and this is kind of their portion to reflect on the program. We have the self-reflection, basically the name of their mentee. At the beginning of the program, I felt blank, but now, since I've completed the program, I feel confident, overjoyed, you know, stuff like that. My future plans are too, and then I will be able to achieve these goals because, and it explains that. And then lastly, it says, "I made the biggest improvement in academics, growth, or college preparation." And then it has the questionnaire. This questionnaire is sent to them at the beginning of the program. It basically says, like, "Are you interested in college? What's your favorite subject? Have you ever thought about college? Are, you know, are you going, are you planning on going to college?" This is at the beginning, and then they're going to be filling this out at the end as well to see if they actually made an impact on their college improvement or their college thought process. And then lastly, just the notes. And then every student's going to receive a notebook and a pen as well. And then that's going to be a self-reflection at the end of every program. They're going to reflect on what they've learned that day, or what they've achieved that day, et cetera. And I just wanted to share this with you guys as well, just to kind of see it. I shared it with Ms. Polakowski and Mr. Urbanovich today. And if you guys want to take a look at it, you're more than welcome to do so. Thank you. Oh, and just a quick reminder, February ninth, I know I kind of say it every meeting, February ninth is the start of the program from ten to twelve, is at J.P. Stevens in the library. Next, we have February seventeenth, and that's the trip to Mammoth. We're leaving at nine and coming back at five. And then lastly, April sixth is the end-of-the-year banquet. And we would like to just recognize what every member of the board, as well as Mr. She, Mr. Saxon, Mrs. Gulik, Ms. Polakowski, if she's able to make it, and if everyone's able to make it. And then we do have two guest speakers as well. The first is Mayor Versiglano, or the former Mayor Versiglano, as well as Mr. Kyle Anderson, the Memphis County Superintendent. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting all this program together. I just want to have one comment to add, is that, you know, you talked to the end, the college education and stuff like that. If you can think about, you know, right now, the college is expensive. To encourage those kids to apply for financial aid and stuff, a lot of things are available to them. Because when you first look at the college tuition, it's very expensive, and some people, you know, just because of that, they backed off. But try to encourage them to go with different routes and apply for some of those aids, and that will help them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jerry. Joey, that's a very impressive binder, and I love the notebook and the pen. How did you put that together? Like, did you do it yourself, or did you have input?
Well, my mom suggested that the binder would be, it would... Because originally, I thought of the notebooks, but my mom said, "Well, what about binders?" And I kind of put it together, but I did have help from everybody, like with the survey and the questionnaire. Those were questions sent from the mentees. And everything else was kind of ready, like printed out, and so I just put it together.
That's really impressive, and I think the surveys are going to be enormously helpful. My one other suggestion, take a lot of pictures so that you have documentation. You're going to treasure that later on when this batch of kids comes back five years from now and says, "Oh, my God, that's what I looked like when I was in high school." Yeah, take lots of pictures. Thanks again, Joe.
You're welcome.
Andrew Hybel, Howard Avenue. I just wanted to touch base on what I said before about the transfers. Two things happened in two thousand and eleven. You had a new superintendent, and Chapter seventy-eight law was signed by Governor Christie. So what happened in the following year, the employees started contributing a quarter of what their full allotment was going to be. And money, extra monies developed into that line item. In no way am I insinuating that Mr. Mashad has influx of money or any type of extra money. Money was generated from the employees contributing back to the benefits. And the superintendent that you had at the time seen there was money there and decided to use that monies for other expenditures. Like I said, and Mr. Mashad just doesn't come out of the blue and say, "I'm taking money out of account A and put it in account B," had to find the money from somewhere. So it was, over the years, monies have contributed into them line items, a quarter, a half, a third, and a full allotment, and there was just like an influx of money in those accounts. So it just, it happened over time. It's nobody's fault the money was there. You know, and I'm sure that when you do the budget, you take, subtract what the employees give off of that line item, but there is always a little play, and you have money in the other accounts. And then second, I do, as Jeff and Matt stated, I want to thank the board for meeting with all the associations last week during your closed session. You met with us, I think, the longest amount of time that any groups have met with the board on one particular grievance. And you heard all of our complaints and our concerns, and I want to thank you for that. And, you know, we did meet with the insurance carrier and the broker back in October with a board member and some administrators then. We were told that things were going to be corrected then. That was October. They still haven't been corrected. So I know you met with them earlier, you met with us last week. If we have to all meet together and, you know, talk in front of everybody and see what's going on, I'm sure Jeff and Matt and the teachers and the principals and us and the bus drivers would all be willing to meet with you again if we can get this settled once and for all, because it's life-altering and life-changing for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes. Yes, yes. Sorry.
Carol Bedowski, thirty-nine Jonathan Drive. I first just like to thank Mr. Bowden and Mr. Revnack, because my number is number ninety-seven. And even though I'm retired, they make me feel really young, because their numbers are further back than mine. Student recognition night is always my favorite Board of Ed meetings. I've been attending these meetings for over twenty-five years, and it remains the same. Once again, I want to thank you for all you have done and continue to do for the students of the Edison Public Schools. Is it worth every bit of effort you put into this? I think you saw tonight, absolutely. If tonight's ceremony didn't convince you, get out and see for yourself. The incredible holiday concerts Mrs. Conway and I attended, the FCCLA students I judged in competitive events, and the videos and stories featured on the district website are just a few examples I have seen in action this year. Each time student recognition is held at our Board of Education meetings is a special occasion for me. I am so proud of every one of them. These are my favorites, and so that does say a lot after twenty-five years. Our students achieve amazing things every day. They may be the best and brightest in the world from around the world, but they can't do it in a vacuum. There are many issues facing our schools every day, and I recognize the challenges the Board of Ed and our staff face. They can't do it in a vacuum either. I know that our district is without a permanent superintendent of schools, but for now, we have an interim superintendent who is hard at work right here already. He has experience, knowledge, and leadership skills, and is doing a great job. But we understand that by definition of interim, he is not permanent here. I know the Board of Ed members are hard at work on this issue, but we are in great hands for now. I'm well aware that the two biggest issues I hear at the Board of Ed meetings and from the public are overcrowding and school security, which I know you are working very hard on already. But I keep hearing three other things that are lacking, and they come up often. There appear to be shortages of school nurses, bus drivers, and substitute teachers. I keep hearing this explanation to complaints at board meetings. I realize that our district already has two really big items on our slate, safety and overcrowding. But while we're working on the big issues, we need to work towards eliminating those shortages. The need to focus efforts on overcrowding and security does not mean that we can't have active plans, committees, and projects finding ways and means to recruit, train, and employ the needed bus drivers, substitute teachers, and school nurses. These are not just perceived needs or wish lists. The children are without buses when they need them, nurses when they need them, and staff members are struggling to keep classrooms covered. All of this is at the cost of effective programs and activities. Many, many years ago, before ninety-seven, we had a substitute teacher shortage in Long Branch. And I was serving as a reading specialist, but I was spending more of my time as a substitute teacher. And that meant that my students, who needed the extra help, were not receiving it. And we were receiving a lot of federal funding to provide them that help, and I was babysitting or substitute teaching in classrooms because we didn't have enough substitutes. So my friend and I created a plan, we worked really hard, and achieved our goal and presented at the New Jersey School Boards Convention, sharing with other districts how we had gotten the job done. These are not big jobs, but they can bring huge positive results for our town. Find someone, not, I'm not saying me, find someone who cares about the missed buses, the missing school nurse, the lack of substitute teachers, and recruit them at the time they're complaining to join a task force looking into the issue. Round them up and let them come up with a plan, and then listen to it. And finally, related to that last thing, April is National Poetry Month. So I just wanted to recite a few lines from a poem I learned in sixth grade by Edgar A. Guest. "Somebody said that it couldn't be done, but he with a chuckle replied, 'Maybe it couldn't, but he would be one who wouldn't say so until he tried.'" So he buckled right in with the trace of a grin on his face. If he worried, he hid it. He started to sing as he tackled the thing that couldn't be done, and he did it. Now, I'm not asking you to all start singing up there, but sometimes the little things, if you work on them, the big things kind of fall into place. You are making positive change happen. You just need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for all the teachers and unions to come here to express their concern about the insurance. I was, last week was the first, my first time to hear all these issues at last week's meeting, and it was long. But I do want to say that I share your concerns. I do feel your pain. I was lucky, I guess, I, my entire life, I had only had to call my insurance company once, but it was long and devastating, and I, it was like a few hours for one issue. After that, I feel like it's a waste of my life to be the least. And it's also very frustrating. It just makes me frustrated to say that I have to fight for something that I deserve. So I think we were all promised last year by this, by Cigna, that we're going to get equal or better. But I raised my concerns to them now, today, and I wanted to see their logs. They claim they have log files. And I want to see, I asked, I have asked them to give us a detailed log, item by item, not just average response time. And we are going to talk to them. We're going to get some more details about this, and we're going to get to the bottom of this. And I just want to say that we were promised something, and if they cannot deliver, they are going to be out. I mean, at least for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, you've heard me saying before last year, if the vendor does not deliver, they're out. So, you know, that was more on the other side, but the thing is that we have the, you know, the benefits, the insurance is utmost to our educators, our teachers, our staff, you know, in our district. We'll try to get it right. We'll do our best. Again, just like Mrs. Penn said, if they cannot deliver, they're out. Very, very simple. All right? With that said, I'd like to have a motion to add a closed session to the end of this meeting. We'll go back to the room to talk more about the insurance. So can I have a second?
I'm going to read the resolution.
All right, you got to read it? Okay, I'm sorry. We're not done yet.
We're at Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and where the public body is with the opinion that such circumstances exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education from the attached Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding health insurance issues. Three, as anticipated at this time, that the above stated subject matter shall be made public as such time as needed for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right, now can I have a motion? All right, now can I have a motion? Okay, Mrs. Ward, can I have a second?
Look at that, I stuck my head out.
Dr. Chen? Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Aricca?
Yes.
Mr. She?
Yes.
Well, yes.
We do not expect, we do not expect to come back, so, you know, see you next month.